The line crossing over Beaver Lake through some of the most incredible scenery in the world, and that doesn't even involve the use of herbicides and everything else involved. And yes, I speak from maybe a proprietary thing about Eureka Springs in our industry of tourism, but the fact that it's not within our city limits doesn't negate the fact that it will impact us significantly, particularly across Leatherwood Valley. I just feel that the northern routes proposed by SWEPCO are unconscionable. They've taken no regard to what this area is significant, both from just the scenic beauty, but from a monetary standpoint and what this area contributes. Tourism is a very large part of industry here in Arkansas, and for it to be jeopardized by, in my opinion, such a callous disregard for the assets of this community, I feel that this council has to take a position on this and let them know that we do not share their proposals for the area around Eureka Springs.
Mr. Mitchell.
I wholeheartedly concur with everything Councilman DeVito said and would hope that council would consider a resolution in support of Save the Ozarks if that's the minimum that we can do, and that we could get the attorney, our attorney, to draft that and get that on record ASAP. I'm not putting that into motion yet. I'll let some other people talk. But I, for one, was appalled. It was, I finally got over the cell tower, although I'm still not over it. Every time I look at it, I get mad. So I can just imagine what this is going to be, the health, all the aspects of it. It's, I think we're almost getting raped. Sorry.
Ms. Eller, go ahead.
Well, first of all, remembering the cell tower, are there any federal laws that would interfere with our objecting to this? Is there any kind of a federal mandate like there is with a cell tower? If they want to put in a cell tower, they will, and you can just, you know, live with it. Is the federal government at all involved in this kind of transporting electricity thing?
May I speak to that?
Yeah, sure.
I had a conversation with Mark.
With the mayor's permission.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stowe.
Second.
Come on up.
I had a conversation with Mark Pryor's office, and he told me that this is exclusively a state thing, having to do with our Arkansas Public Service Commission. And it's, and that's the granting agency that would give SWEPCO the power to go through the condemnation of our properties and all of that kind of thing. He said that there was no connection between the U.S. Senate and the federal government and the authorizations to either support or withhold support for this project.
Okay, so we're on firm ground there. My second question is, what is SWEPCO's justification for this route? There certainly are easier places to build a transmission line than across that valley and up the ridge and down the hill. And where, have they responded at all to this? Are they trying to tell us this is the only possible route you can follow because of some geological thing, which apparently not. There hasn't been much of geology and gone.
Okay, let's sit to council members.
If I don't get it right, I'll be glad to recognize members of the audience. There's a half a dozen proposed routes, some longer than others. Three of the northern routes would go in close proximity to Eureka Springs. There is a southern route that goes due south and doesn't come as close to Eureka Springs. But yeah, the three of the proposed routes go right in our neighborhood.
So why us is a perfectly valid question.
Mr. Stowe. Come on up.
I'll go ahead and recognize her.
Second.
In the report, SWEPCO says they actually looked at over 128.
Come on.
SWEPCO looked at over 128 routes. Obviously not in great detail, and they used an, they used a process to get the best routes to rise to the top. And I don't remember all the criteria, but it would be density of population, use of the land. Down at number six was the beauty of the view. So SWEPCO did consider other places, but they really only did flyovers in a helicopter. Apparently, they did not do much land work to choose the top six. Okay? And they rose to the top because of, they try very often to not cross a plot of land or a parcel. They come on the edge of someone's property so that both sides could be happier. Yes?
So one of the main factors, then, the way you phrase that, was actually cost of running the line.
I should, did not mention that, but I should have. The other cri, in the top five was the use of the land. Well, that land is not being used for, just for cattle. There's no dairy. It's some very large parcels.
It's cheaper to, it's cheaper to buy.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McLean.
Well, it, from what I saw of the routes, the most northern proposed route was the least offensive, which is the one they, that is their, their first choice at number 33, I think it is, which goes up by Gateway and around that way, and then comes across, it does come across Beaver Town and south of the bridge and approximately in the Gaskin Switch area is where it crosses through and goes on. You know, I, I don't like it either. I don't know if there's anything that we can do to stop it from happening. I really can't believe that the federal government doesn't have some, some input into these kind of things. I mean, that, that almost sounded like passing the buck to me, but maybe that is indeed the case. I really don't know, because it's not my bailiwick, of course. But, you know, as I say, that northern route that they, that they prefer is the most least offensive, but that's neither here nor there. I'm certainly not opposed to, for what it's worth, not the ordinance, but the resolution, you know, by us if it's, if it's something that we can do just as they stand, because I, you know, I hate to see it. If the eyesore is, pretty much that's what it's all about.
First, about your turn.
I don't see that the city can do anything about it other than a resolution and just make our thoughts known by consensus at the council table. The things that kind of stand out to me are, you know, were the owners' land condemned? Were condemnation procedures used to force owners that did not want to, to sell their land? Were those procedures done? Were all the owners that this power line crossed over, did they, were they all against it, or were some for it? And I'm looking at you, Mr. Mayor, because there's nobody here to answer that question. Yes, sir?
They haven't been approached yet, because it hasn't been determined which route they're going to take.
Okay, so this is all.
At that time, it will be, it will be by condemnation.
Okay, so the route hasn't been determined. There's been preliminary routes, I guess, published in the newspaper or something?
Yeah, you can go on their website and see what.
Okay. So, you know, before they do any of that, I would assume that they would have to have an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement, that sort of thing.
They did.
That, that's.
For all the top six routes?
You can go to savetheozarks.org. All that information.
Okay.
And post the environmental impact statement. We've posted everything.
Okay, we'll have to get you into the microphone if you're going to continue.
Well, evidently, there's a lot of information out there, and I'm not very aware of it yet.
Y'all know as much as I do, sitting here at this table, because all it was, was just informed that they're going to do it, that they want to do it. Let's put it that way.
You know, if somebody wants to, to form a resolution, that's fine with me, and that'll let Mr. DeVito, I'll give him that honor.
Did you have some further, Mr. Mitchell?
No, I'm going to defer to Mr. DeVito. No, I am going to defer to you, sir.
I have something to put in there. I mean, I object to the assessment that one of the criteria was the land isn't being used. Now, excuse me, that land is being used. It's part of our tourism. It's part of our marketing. The CAPC needs to rein in on this. We cannot have those, that scenery and those visions destroyed just for the sake of transmitting electricity. I'm sorry, it's too valuable to us. It brings in too much money. We depend on that scenery. We depend on those views. That's a very callous attitude, because you're not raising cows on the land, that it's not being used. Excuse me, I remember back in the eighties, excuse me for being so, all the parks, or no, the forestry commission came up with a really Mickey Mouse idea. They were going to make a lot of money for the state by cutting down all the oak trees and planting pines instead, because you could harvest pines and sell the lumber. And it was pointed out to them that each oak tree is probably worth thousands of dollars in tourism revenue, because people come here to look at the oak tree. So the same thing with this. You cannot destroy the scenery of this area. I mean, Southern Carroll County, fine, you know, there's cows there, and you can put the line through the cows. And I'm suspicious of this clearing 150 feet. I have never seen the government do anything. Whenever I've seen a really high-powered transmission line anywhere, believe me, there was a lot more clear cutting than 150 feet. I'm sorry, I don't buy that 150 feet. I'm thinking more closer to maybe 300, 400, 500 feet, because they, they take a terrible swath. I mean, even worse than a four-lane highway with sidewalks on both sides. I mean, when they, when they start coming in here, I mean, well, you know that, they take a terrible swath of land. It's going to absolutely destroy the scenery around here. So I think we can get parks of tourism on this. I think we need to get them moving on this and say, no, you cannot do this. And I think the CAPC has to put in its oar and complain, because it's going to destroy our marketing.
Mr. DeVito.
Just, just that, just for your information, Joey, if it's 150-foot right-of-way, that's all they can do. They have no jurisdiction beyond 150 feet.
I'll believe that when I see it. I mean, oops, oh my goodness, we kind of went over the line there, didn't we?
Yes.
I don't trust the government any farther than I can throw them.
These are going to be transmissions lines, like you see coming out of New Quan Down around Dardenell. They're going to be upwards of 150 to 160 feet tall. If, if we regretted the impact of the cell tower, these are going to be towers worse than that.
Absolutely.
Every hundred, every 800 feet.
It's appalling.
So it's going to be multiple towers. So I think all we can practically do here as a council is to draft a resolution expressing the extraordinary resources that we have here in Eureka Springs and in the Beaver Lake area, the aspect of tourism and how it is such an important industry here in Arkansas, and the results of the impact on tourism in this pristine environment and in a significantly unique visually awesome place like Eureka Springs. Personally, if, as I've looked at the six routes, I would say that we would ask them to discount all the routes, all the northern routes. The southern route, to me, yes, it clears more land, but fewer people will see it. Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people will be seeing these power lines on the northern routes going across Beaver Lake and, you know, it's just appalling that those, the three routes that are around Eureka Springs. So the resolution should state, you know, the incredible resources that we have that would be endangered by all the northern routes that SWEPCO has proposed.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion to write a resolution, but I can't flesh out the wording on the resolution.
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. DeVito act as a liaison with the city attorney to.
With the writer's colony.
Hash out a resolution.
I'll accept that responsibility, and I'll do it in concert with other members in the community.
Second.
Good discussion.
May I be recognized again?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, go ahead.
Do I have to bear the microphone?
Yes, ma'am, you do.
Very loud voice. Okay. This will shock you, but as letterholders, we have a right to approach the, the Arkansas Public Services Committee. But they warn you, don't use as one of your arguments the beauty of the land or the scenic view. Very depressing. The other thing that I wanted to say, by chance, this has hit people who are near, letterholders, whatever, or people who are just inflamed by it. It has hit people who are very active in the community, have strong businesses, do intensive voluntary, voluntary work. I hear talks of leaving, and you don't want that to happen, a lot of people, and wonder whether we should have gone to Oregon or Vermont, because Arkansas had a fantastic environmental record when we came here in 96, and it has deteriorated terribly. You can stop it. You can be a bulkhead to that.
Mr. Mitchell. Thank you, ma'am.
We have two.
Yes, sir. Let him speak first.
We have two very passionate and educated people here, and I suspect that Mr. DeVito will be picking their brains in concert with helping the attorney write this resolution. And that was, that's just a comment, not implying, but I suspect that will happen.
Council good, Mr. Stowe speaking again.
Please. Second.
You know, I'm very protective of, you know, very forceful that we not have Route 91, because that's the one that comes closest to my home. But I don't want to throw the residence of 33 under the bus. If you explore the Route 33, you find, this is a southern route, you'll find, no, 33 is a northern route. The, I can't remember the name of the southern route, the green line, but that's part of the other entryway to Eureka Springs, you know? It goes across Highway 23, and it goes right alongside that big bridge they built in, crossing Beaver Lake, 412 Bridge. And so it's going to be going all along 412, so it's going to be disrupting the view coming in to Eureka Springs from that direction. So I think, you know, from my own personal perspective, we need to be adamant that this is not needed. It will be destructive when it arrives, regardless of the direction that it comes. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
And I appreciate that, but, Mr. Stowe, with all due respect, the council here is kind of concerned about Eureka Springs and our surrounding areas. So if you find our focus that way, we apologize to everybody else. They just need to pick up the ball in their area and find it, too. My own comment.
All right, so we are left with any further discussion, and then we'll go back to the motion and the second that was made, which we'll restate for everybody's clarity.
Mr. Perkypile made a motion to have, have Mr. DeVito work with the city attorney to draft a resolution.
City attorney.
To get a liaison with the city attorney to draft the resolution.
Okay, we need to state in that motion what the resolution's for.
Our stance against proposed routes in the Eureka Springs area.
Okay. All right. Does a second still stand on that amendment to that resolution?
It's still standing.
All right, any further discussion? All right, if not, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Jim, can I get those lungs?
Thank you for your motion.
Okay, all right. I know you had those.
We've got to get Calvin on it.
I don't smoke, but I'm on a break.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Okay, now, moves us to the town hall meeting workshop date. Motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor is open.
If we get Diane, our liaison, to setting dates for us, or, I do think we need the workshop, because we need to develop a structure. We need to figure out what we're going to be talking about, whether, how it's going to be set up, question and answer, who's going to be in attendance, how to get the public there. So, yeah, it could, could take up a workshop.
Any further? Okay, if not, we'll move on to number four. Number three was taken off the agenda. And then before is the discussion limo ordinance. Motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor is open.
I guess, where did we leave this last with Mr. Weaver? You were.
You have it with me. Mr. DeVito had volunteered to help me with that, and I have not contacted Mr. DeVito until Friday of last week. I could barely make out my own doorwinds. In fact, I've got a bum shoulder now for running the doorways. But I stopped taking, or was, most of the drops that they were putting in there ended on last Friday, and assuming that they don't tell me tomorrow they're going to cut my open again, I will be contacting Mr. DeVito and hopefully have that for you at your next council.
I make a motion to table this until the next council meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, postpone. Okay, that moves us to number five, Planning Commission Membership Ordinance 2179. This will be the third reading, is my understanding.
It says second here.
Second reading? Okay, I bet. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Floor is open. Yes, sir.
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2179 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we'll do real con veron.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Five zero. Ordinance 2179, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 13.04.02A regarding the membership of the planning commission.
Mr. DeVito.
I move to approve ordinance number 2179 on its second reading. So moved. Second. Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All righty. No further motions on this one?
I'll just take a shot at it. And move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2179 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2179, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 13.04.02A regarding the membership of the planning commission.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2179 on its third reading. Second.
Uh, wait. Oh, yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you, folks. Okay. Get my stuff out of the way here. That will bring us to demo by neglect workshop update, number six, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Close open.
We had a workshop last week, I do believe, somewhere about in there, well-attended. I think, in summary, those in attendance were very careful to distinguish very clearly that what we are looking at is structures within the total city limits that have, in two, in two ways. One, hopefully in prevention, and two, once prevention and some type of action has not happened, and they have reached such a stage of neglect that those structures are taken down in an expeditious manner with due process. Yeah, I think that was kind of it. We are staying away from being the pretty police, as Alderman Perkypile addressed, which is true. We're not discussing at this point the condition of people's property or yards within the city limits. Want to be very clear, we're not discussing your hoarder and your property looks horrible, or it's full of toilets, or whatever else it is. We're not discussing that. We are discussing buildings in two stages. Hopefully, some type of action to prevent them becoming so neglected, and if they become neglected, a process that has some teeth in it that we can handle. In that light, Glynn Booth and I are taking the prior ordinance that was referendummed and cleaning it up and coming up with a new process, and then we'll probably set another workshop, at which time we'll seek some more input. And that's where we are.
Any further? Okay, thank you, sir. If nothing else, we'll move on to number seven, which is the ordinance for parking lot regulations. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, floor is open.
See what, aren't we, did we read this already once? Or did we just get it?
This is, I think the ordinance just now showed up. Mr. Weaver had been working on it as he had the opportunity.
Is this it?
No, it was on, at your place when you.
It will be an ordinance, unnumbered ordinance.
It was one of the two pieces of paper.
Yes, we went over the details of it last time. Speaking some language. Mr. DeVito.
I would move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading. Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2180. An ordinance amending the Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 8.48. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the current code subsection 8.48 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, and whereas it has been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the subsection, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one. That subsection 8.48 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to read as follows. 8.48.01, managed by the city. Any person desiring to park any vehicle within a parking space on any parking lot owned or managed by the city between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. shall deposit in U.S. currency in the proper amount for the time desired into the designated space's parking meter as the fee therefore. 8.48.02, short-term parking cost. The rate for parking in a city-owned or operated short-term parking lot in the whole, or any part of provision other than the parts so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section three, repeal clause. All ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to approve ordinance 2180 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Given the opportunity to place them as strategic points, this was the information I was given. Since he's on a bicycle more than I am, I have no problem with that, but I wanted to bring it for the council again, or make sure the council knew what the current proposition was, and get your input on it. Yes, sir.
I think, as we had previously discussed, it was two. One down here by the courthouse, and another one up...where was it? Between here and the library, or at the top of...
At the library.
Was it at the library?
That's a different one. They've already got that.
Yeah, they've already got one. It was one at the top of the hill.
Somewhere up in there.
Yeah.
I meant the post office.
Yeah, and the post office, that does have a grassed area that if they would...
That was my understanding, that y'all had asked me to do that.
Yeah, that was right. That was the two.
This was the counteroffer, and I wanted to make sure you were wearing both of them.
Well, I don't know what that means.
Mr. DeVito?
Well, I spoke with the postmaster. Initially, we'd approved two by the courthouse. The postmaster has no problems placing a bike rack on their property as long as there's no cost to the post office. Jeez, could we turn that off?
Yeah, that's what they were...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was rather annoying, wasn't it?
I think those are strategically located places, since there's already one going in at the library, the post office, and then the courthouse would be two very good places to put them, so...unless Mr. Denton West?
Denton West, yeah.
Denton West?
He has the outfitters up just past him.
Correct, yeah. I can't imagine where he would come up with any better locations than that, but it'd be amenable to hearing from him.
I told him I'd tell you, so...you're told. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I must have been sleeping. Tell me again what he said.
My understanding is that Mr. West, who volunteered to make the bicycle racks...
Right.
Also asked that he be responsible for placing the bicycle racks. In strategic areas. I have not spoken directly to him.
I think...
Information passed on to me.
I think, Mr. Mayor, that the council probably feels comfortable with the two locations we've talked about in the city core proper.
Okay, then that's where we'll put him, because he'll have the final say-so of it. You said the postmaster is good with us putting it out front?
He has no problems whatsoever. He thinks it's a great idea, as long as there's no cost to the post office.
He's just bolting it to the concrete.
Yeah.
Now, I guess it's as historic as we have to get historic district to allow us to put a bicycle rack in front of the post office, which is federal property? Yes. Again, you've got to consider all the sources, yeah.
If he chooses to put a bicycle rack on every straight corner in town at his own expense with an owner's permission, I mean, what am I going to do to stop it?
If I had...
I can't imagine what he's...
If I had a preference in this, I would prefer y'all save where they go. He can make them, and then if he wants to withdraw them because he doesn't get to do that, then that's, I guess that's his prerogative. But as it is right now, Mr. Weaver?
Under the way the state law is set up, if they're going to put them on any city properties...
Yes.
These people have to approve where. So you can't just say, if it's city, you can stick it. You've got to approve the particular spot. Now, you go with the merchants that they own the spot, they can put them wherever they want, as long as they get the proper authority, if it's HDC or whoever needs to approve in those areas. But if it's going to be setting in...on city property, of course, the one at the...of course, at the federal...or at the...
Post office.
Post office would be federal property, so the city doesn't really dictate that.
Okay, so we've got one at the library, which is already okay by the county. We can put one at the post office, which is okay by the postmaster. He has purview over his property there. And then there's one left. You want to put it on city property, we can definitely do it.
Right here.
Right here, yeah.
Okay. You want me to pick the spot?
Sure.
Okay, done deal.
You could last time.
Okay. Any further on that one? We'll relay that information. Thank you. Brings us into new business. Number one has been postponed until November. Number two is the taxi ordinance with jumbo cabs, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Weaver?
We're at the same spot on that as we are on the limos. Soon as I can see and soon as I can get with Mr. DeVito, hopefully you'll have an ordinance.
I move to table this discussion until the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Brings us to number three, discussion of weekly rentals.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
Okay. Hold on here a minute. The weekly rentals thing came...was brought to my attention by several constituents who were pretty upset about this whole thing, and they wanted something done about it, and I think, you know, they have a sincere complaint. It's against the law to rent...apparently it's against the law. I know there seems to be some doubt as to whether we have an ordinance about this or not, but the research that I have and the information that I was sent is that it is definitely against the law to have weekly rentals in R1 and R2 districts without a conditional use permit. And Beverly's not here, so she can't clear that.
Yes, she is. She's right back.
Oh, she is? Okay. Okay, Beverly, explain. Okay, then, let's not let me hang out here on this limb. Tell me what the law is so far. Where are we? Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, okay, but I just...I don't have to lecture. Somebody else can tell us this.
We do have a definition in our code about a dwelling unit, and it's just a definition, but it says it could be rented or leased on a weekly, monthly, or longer basis. But a dwelling unit is just...has sleeping quarters and a kitchen. There's Eureka Suites across the street from my store that has kitchens and living quarters and sleeping, and they rent by the week, and there's nothing wrong with that. So, some parts of town, it's okay that they rent by the week. In R1, it specifically says in our code that there is to be no more tourist lodging, which is to transient people. So, I read what Bobby Ray gave you, and his very last sentence says, at this time, according to the definitions in our code, weekly rentals are permitted in R1. If he would have went on to say, but only in a landlord-tenant relationship, that would be correct. If it's for rental to any transient or tourist, that is...it's illegal. And we had this discussion last year, and the council voted that our laws were strong enough, and the city attorney agreed that the people that are doing this should be cited, and we should go to court if necessary. However, I don't believe that they have been cited at this point.
So, what we have here is the complaints. I have a bunch of emails here. I'm not going to read them to you, but generally, the gist of it is, these are from bed-and-breakfast owners. For instance, "I oppose legal residential tourist lodging because they're having a detrimental effect on my business. I have enough problems trying to fill my rooms without having to compete with people using private homes as tourist lodging. Please enforce our current zoning laws." And that is the problem. We have this law that you're not allowed to do this, and people are doing it because they're operating under a business license, a 199 business license, and that is my other problem. If something is against the law, you can't just get a license to operate that business, and that makes it legal. It would seem to me, just, you know, in thinking about this, that the 199 license is not valid, that they're operating without a license because it's against the law to have weekly rentals in these districts. Now, there has been an opinion from the municipal league, and there's been an opinion by a man by the name of Van Tungland, who's kind of considered Arkansas's authority on zoning, that suggests that the purpose of this thing is to preserve the R1 neighborhoods, and I agree with that. And the problem seems to be is that even if these people are renting weekly, they are still renting by the night sometimes. And what I propose is, and we probably need a workshop on this, because what I propose is to clean up the business licenses, to reword the ordinances that we have, to make it very clear that you cannot do this in these neighborhoods, and to set forth, perhaps these people, we have a list of these people that are doing this, send them a notice that their license is not in effect, it's illegal, and they can either go through the process of a CUP. I don't even know whether that's possible, to get a CUP in an R1, because I'm certainly not an authority on planning. But either they do it right, or they don't do it at all. And set it up as a fine-only violation, and enforce the law, because I don't think it's...the people that have bed-and-breakfast, they have jumped through all the hoops, they've checked the zoning, they have done everything that they were expected to do, they got their licenses, and they're operating, and it isn't fair for someone else to come in and find a way to get around the law and compete with them. It just...we keep talking about leveling playing fields, and I think this is one time when we have to do this. Now, Van Tungland has suggested that perhaps the law can be changed to make it no less than a month rental, and I'm not sure we even want to do that. As I said, we probably need a workshop to discuss this and discuss the localities of it, but I feel that we need to do something about it to make this fair to everybody and to enforce this law.
Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Weaver, last...I'm going to have you go back. It's one of those last councils, probably around November somewhere last year. You brought a really nice little ordinance that got...made it, I think, I don't even remember if it made a couple readings or not, but somewhere you had an ordinance that you had drafted based on everything that was going on at that time, in which you covered some elements of it, and you covered what would happen with the people that had already applied and everything, and you had all these restrictions, and you had really put some time and effort and some legal knowledge to that, and it kind of just didn't go anywhere. Is resurrecting what you can remember, is that still a potential solution to this problem today?
It is a potential solution, although I think honestly that, as your planning commissioner just told you, there are statutes on our books, ordinances on our books, that allow them to be prosecuted if they are renting to transient tourists. And you document that to set up the case for a judge by where they're advertising, how they're advertising, and who they're renting to. It's not uncommon throughout Arkansas to have people rent week to week, especially in low-income areas where they can't afford to pay first and last month's rent and make a monthly rental payment. So they pay by the week. But you've got people that are taking advantage of the system, apparently, and trying to rent, not to low-income people who need to rent week to week, but they're saying, well, if you can rent week to week, we're going to rent week to week, but we're going to advertise over here on this website that is mostly viewed by tourists, not by low-income people looking for something where they don't have to put up $1,200, $1,800 to get moved in somewhere. So really, the argument about 199, which has been bantered about often, is kind of a red herring. It's not really...well, they're saying, well, we have a license. You can get that 199 license, and you can go do any business you want, but it doesn't make that business legal just because you're carrying a license that says 199 on it, if it's otherwise illegal. And it is otherwise illegal, under our code, for you to be renting those as tourist lodging, to renting them to people that are coming here to view the trees, or go to Leatherwood, or go to the music shows, or whatever they're doing. It's legal to rent them to people who unfortunately don't have the economic wherewithal to rent on a longer term and put up the kind of deposits that a typical landlord wants with a six-month lease.
But I don't see deposits in the landlord-tenant relationship built in anywhere into this, so let me just be a devil's advocate here. Whether you go get your 199 or not, it makes no difference, but let's say I have a house on one of these streets, and I decide, oops, I'm going to go into the weekly rental business. So I advertise on this VBR, Vacation Rental By Owner, or Home Away, or whichever one of these sites are. If you go on those sites and take a look at them, there are thousands of homes that rent by the week, or the month, or the night. They all don't just rent by the night. There are people that go on those sites and rent homes for longer periods of time, anywhere in the world, actually. And so, your audience, when you do that, could be. So say I'm of such a mind as to put my piece of property on vacation rental by owner, and I have somebody contact me and says, I want to take a period of time, and it's in this week, and I have them sign a tenant landlord piece of paper. I don't require...I may require a declining deposit, I may not even require a deposit, who knows? But I haven't signed this piece of paper, and they stay two or three days. How are we going to legally segregate that out? Because who knows if they're transient? I mean, I'm not having trouble here.
By virtue of where they're advertising. New York City does this. New York City allows rental by the week, but they do not allow tourist rental within the five boroughs for week-long stays. And if you advertise on the website that you're talking about, or you advertise just because it looks like a duck, if you call it a chicken, doesn't make it a chicken. You go back and you inspect. If it's got a bill, if you're advertising on a tourist website, it's got a bill. It's got web feet if you're renting mostly to people that are coming here and staying a week or less. And a judge would be required, if that person was cited, to look at the evidence of, does these parts make up the duck, or are they a chicken?
So you're saying we still...as a city attorney, are you comfortable in defending that position you just took? Are you going to send it to a judge to make the decision?
Well, a judge would make the decision. We would cite them for operating illegally, and then they would come through the system, and if they disputed it, ultimately, it would go to a trial, and it would be a trial right upstairs in our district court to begin with.
And we're going to cite them only on the basis... By virtue of where they're advertising. New York City does this. New York City allows rental by the week, but they do not allow tourist rental within the five boroughs for week-long stays. And if you advertise on the website that you're talking about, or you advertise just because it looks like a duck, if you call it a chicken, doesn't make it a chicken. You go back and you inspect. If it's got a bill, if you're advertising on a tourist website, it's got a bill. It's got web feet if you're renting mostly to people that are coming here and staying a week or less. And a judge would be required, if that person was cited, to look at the evidence of, does these parts make up the duck, or are they a chicken?
So, you're saying we still, as a city attorney, are you comfortable then defending that position you just took? Are you going to send it to a judge to make the decision?
Well, a judge would make the decision. We would cite them for operating illegally. And then, they would come through the system, and if they disputed it, ultimately, it would go to a trial. And it would be a trial right upstairs in our district court to begin with.
And we're going to cite them only on the basis that they...
That they're operating a tourist lodging within an area where it's not allowed.
Even though the definition is a dwelling, it's a house, it's not sleeping accommodations?
Yes. I think we can do that.
Think? Okay.
Okay.
There is no absolute in law. And that is the idea of law, is that even if there is a black and white law, the law says that you have a basis to argue that that black and white law should be changed, that that is an issue you can take to court. And as an attorney, or as a defendant, or litigant, you can argue that to create a change in the law. So, am I comfortable that no judge will say it's not right? I can't tell you that, because even if it's absolutely black and white, carved in stone, you can advocate against that position if there's a basis to change.
So, we're going to need a test case.
You're going to need a test case.
Mr. Weaver, go ahead.
I'm assuming that our intent is to protect the integrity of neighborhoods, that we want stability in neighborhoods. So, by allowing weekly rentals, that really doesn't achieve that goal. I think we ought to look at increasing it to monthly rentals. Because if you have a constant turnover with weekly tenants in a neighborhood, that's not achieving the goal of stability in neighborhoods, where neighbors know their neighbors, where they know the people who are living next door to them. If it's on a constantly weak turnover, you, in effect, have a transient population within an R1 or an R2 neighborhood. So, the reality of the situation is that there are places in C1 where you can get weekly rentals. So, we're not, if we were to deny all weekly rentals within the city, yeah, we would have a problem. But we're talking about going to monthly rentals in R1 and R2. And I think that goes more towards what we are trying to accomplish, and that is consistency in neighborhoods.
And that is what was being considered primarily, in the way I remember, the ordinance that was shot down. That was the idea, was to push into longer periods. And it did have certain people, for lack of a better term, would have been grandfathered in because they were already operating a weekly term. And it allowed those to exist until the property was, would change hands, and then, or substantially rebuilt. And then, it would eliminate those out, which is typically what happens with non-conforming properties in a new area once you pass a new law.
So, your ordinance did pretty well clean that concept up, and it's still real today.
Beverly, come to the microphone, please.
That sounds good in theory, but the truth of the matter, what made everybody inflamed about that was that there are people renting their homes to transient tourists that were going to get grandfathered, because they were going to say, I'm already renting by the week as a landlord. And that's what made people upset. They did not want these people grandfathered in when they were not truly going by the law in the first place. And so, that's why this failed. Because if you have a law, and you change the law, whatever's going on there already, you have to grandfather a man. And that wasn't really what was happening.
You don't have to grandfather in illegal, non-conforming businesses. They would have to provide documentation that they have, in essence, conducted a business with non-transient guests, that there'd be some type of a documentation that Joe X had resided at that place for nine days or 10 days. But if they can't provide documentation to have established a weekly rental, non-transient business, then they're not grandfathered in.
Mr. Weaver.
Well, have we had a law in the books that says you can't have weekly rentals in R1 and R2? Is there a law now?
We have one that says you can't operate a transient business. We don't have one that says you can't rent on a short-term basis, as long as you're not renting to the transient move-in, move-out tourist.
Okay, now, how long has that law been on the books?
2001. It's ordinance number 1880.
Since when?
2001.
2001.
It's ordinance number 1880, and it was passed in 2001.
Okay, so I should think anybody that's claiming they should be grandfathered, would have to prove that they were in business before that date. Because if they went in business after that date, they were aware that they were doing something illegal.
No, they're not illegal if they're renting truly to the poor, if they're, or to someone who simply doesn't want a six-month lease. But if they are renting to tourists, yes, they're in violation of that ordinance.
Then what we need is a definition of tourists in that law?
There is pretty much a definition of tourists in our code.
And what is a tourist?
It is someone basically, and I will not try to quote you, but basically, a court would interpret a tourist, based on our code, I believe, to be someone from out of state who has no intent of living here on a semi-permanent or permanent basis, only coming here to enjoy a tourist-type activity, or a vacation-type activity. Tourist is probably a bad word. You can't use it in the definition of the definition.
So, what do we have to do, then, to fix the way this is worded, so that we can put this in effect?
My suggestion is you may want to go back and consider your ordinance that the last council was considering. You may want to take a seriously hard look at who would be grandfathered in, because whether or not, as Mr. DeVito said, their duck is quacking or not, in what can they show they've been doing? If they've been renting to tourists, they don't get grandfathered in. But if they've been renting to people who are actually contributing, members of our community, then they should be allowed to continue that use. And we passed the ordinance, making it a 30-day period in at least R1, maybe R2 even. And leave, then, the commercial districts, and maybe R3, which is where your apartments and stuff are typically, where you could rent those on a shorter term than 30 days, or even a longer period, if you want it.
So, one way to prove that, too, would be to CAPC taxes, because you're supposed to collect CAPC taxes on anything less than 30 days, correct?
Well, the tax rule would not demonstrate whether or not they are renting, though, to tourists.
That's true.
It really is going to come down to where are they getting their people from, and whether those people are actually contributing members of our community, or are they contributing members of a tourist inflow-outflow?
So, what's the first thing we have to do to get this going?
You may want to bring back that ordinance for consideration. And I would suggest that if you think there is some on that list that do not deserve to be grandfathered in, they may need to be cited if they're going to continue to operate, and bring a case through the court and see what the court says.
Mr. McClan.
Can you take that previous ordinance, and I just assume that they were taking it to 30 days?
That was the tenet on...
Okay. And then, can you stiffen that, can you put something in there that says, hey, you know, you've got to meet this criteria, or you're done? Or do we have to be, do we need to be unit-specific as to what, who is grandfathered and who is not? Do we need to be that specific ourselves prior to, as a part of the ordinance? Or do we just need to make, it just needs to be completely black and white transparent as to what qualifies and what doesn't? I mean, it's got to have the wording in it that you will have to provide that gives it, that gives it the substance to make it work. You know what I mean?
Yes. The best way, in my opinion, to enforce something where you have a situation, and I hate the term grandfathering, because the law doesn't really use that typically, but where you have properties that are going to be basically grandfathered in, is to, if you can, actually create a list. Because five years down the road, documenting, did I meet all those criteria, yes or no, relies too much on people's memory. And you end up with people who claim, I should have been on that list. And I think we had some of that, where we had to document some properties with planning brought to the last council, where they thought they should have been on the list, where they were apparently either left off, or people's memory had changed. So, if you've got a flat-out list, and you give people plenty of notice, if you really should be on this list, you need to let us know, so you're on the list. Then, later on, it creates a much clearer picture in a court's mind. If they're not on that list, they shouldn't have never been on that list.
Could you do it, as you were putting this ordinance through, could you make a public statement, or actually send certified letters to these people on this list?